Six, two, four. I know that some are still coming in. Before we, you know what, actually, I'll go to the roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll? Oh, sorry.
Arcand.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Ellison, here. Mullen.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
Oh, I skipped Beloit. I'm sorry. Thompson.
Here.
Beloit.
Here.
All right. I know that some are still coming in. First of all, before we get started with the agenda this evening, I just want to, I want to say thank you all. I know that there's a lot of questions and comments and concerns around this issue. I also want to acknowledge the fact that the board has received several emails. There's been a long email list, and not that we haven't replied to all of them. I just wanted to let you know and acknowledge the fact that we've read all of them. We're still working through and gathering information. I know that there's some additional information that's coming out tonight. So we just appreciate everybody's patience with this and understanding. And let us get through the process with the meeting. Tonight is, as being a work study, there's not public comment. But would appreciate, just to let you guys know, that you can always email us. We do read all those emails. And also, next month's meeting, if you want to make public comment at next week's meeting, excuse me, I said month, but I really meant to say week. We have our regular school board meeting, and there is allowed public comment. So with that, I think we will move right into our first, our only discussion item. One, B1, which is the learning model planning update. Dr. Kazmierczak.
All right. Thank you, Board Chair Mullen, members of the board. First, a note. Tonight's meeting is available virtually via live stream. We recognize that the quality is not as high as that of the file that will be archived on the website after tonight's meeting. But we wanted to give community members the opportunity to listen in virtually while the meeting is taking place. All right, to start, I just want to offer a note of thanks. I want to thank those who took the time to reach out during the last week. Hearing perspectives from stakeholders has always been important to this school board and to me. And we appreciate the thoughtful feedback. Not surprisingly, there are very divergent opinions about all topics COVID-19 related. And when the public is so divided, when various stakeholders and stakeholder groups are so passionate about their position, emotions can get elevated. After the meeting, a message will be sent to families and staff explaining the plan. And we hope that this message tonight will allow us to respectfully move forward as a school community. All right, school districts were provided guidance by the Minnesota Department of Education, which I'll refer to as MDE, and the Minnesota Department of Health, which I'll refer to as MDH, to navigate this school year. This guidance has been inconsistently interpreted and inconsistently enforced throughout the state. I have spoken with superintendents in greater Minnesota, who shared with me very different accounts of what they were hearing from MDE and MDH compared to what metro superintendents had heard. Decisions about learning models are complex. And they're even more complex when the state agencies that school leaders look to for leadership and guidance during this pandemic are not clear, inconsistently interpret and apply guidance, and offer contradictory guidance depending on which part of the state you live in and which agency employees are consulted. There's been a seismic shift this past week in the application and enforcement of the guidance. And we have worked as swiftly as possible to understand the options we have in light of recent clarifications from MDE and a change in the emphasis of certain data points. Unfortunately, the shift in state guidance came after last Monday's school board meeting. And the subsequent message we sent out to our families that, that evening, in an effort to give time to react to the change in the calendar. I also want to acknowledge that the lateness of the decision on Friday to keep school in session this week was difficult for many of our educators. And I apologize for the regrettable timing of the changed plans. All right, I'm going to move into the recommendation. So, our goal is to maintain in-person learning as much as possible while still respecting the direction of our state and local health professionals. On Friday, several of us met with our regional support team, which includes MDE and MDH officials, to gain further clarity on what school districts should do in light of rising county case rates. While this is still a very important metric, other data are now an important part of the decision-making process. Data such as confirmed cases in schools, the ratio of staff and students who are in quarantine, and the ability to continue other key operations. We worked with the regional support team to arrive at the following recommendation. So, students in grades nine through 12 will shift to distance learning effective Tuesday, November 17. Monday, November 16, will be a transition day at the high school level. There will be no school for students in grades nine through 12. Students in grades six through eight will remain in the hybrid learning model at this time. Students in grades K through five will remain in the hybrid learning model. Additionally, we will work with building, we will work building by building to shift distance learning students to work with distance learning teachers as much as possible and offer other supports as well. We will continue our effort to move tier-one childcare students to separate pods when possible. Those pods might be at a different site, which could include other school district buildings or leased space in the community. And student, student activities will continue with a continued focus on the implementation of strict safety protocols. All right, just give me a second. All right, before you, is a timeline. So today, November 2, and tomorrow, the previously scheduled is non-school day is for students. November 4 through 6, school is in session for all students. So the transition days that were announced last week have been canceled. This message went out last week. November 9, we're going to continue on that day with hybrid learning model for grades K through 12 plus. And then on November 16, it'll be a transition day at our high school level. There will be no school for students in grades nine through 12. And November 17, all high school students will shift to distance learning. All right, we will continue to monitor our local school level, our local school level data along with county level case rates. Also, know that it is possible that we will need to shift individual schools very quickly into distance learning should we experience an outbreak or if we are not able to staff a particular site. And we should all be prepared for that possibility. So this is where, I'll turn it over to the board. Although if you, if we want, I could invite our activities directors if we wanted to tackle that. I don't think there's perhaps a lot of controversy around that at this point. But if there were questions, that we can have them available if you wanted to start there.
So I think what we'll do, Dr. Kazmierczak, is we'll open it up to questions, and we can kind of work through those pieces and see. And if there's a question regarding activities, we'll include Mr. Paliquinor into that conversation.
Okay.
So, questions, I'll open it up and ask if there are questions regarding the recommendation. Mr. Chapman.
Dr. Kazmierczak, I guess to start off with, we have been hearing, or at least the word that has come to the board repeatedly, is that there has been fluctuation, and I believe you alluded to it, in terms of the state directives that they have termed guidelines. I guess the question that I've got is, who's calling the shots here? Is the state of Minnesota or is the district? As all of us board members know, we have received emails from individuals in other districts across the state that have made it clear that they are apparently getting required to adhere to the quote-unquote guidelines. And, and we also received, I believe, an email from an employee of MDH who, if I read it correctly, makes it sound like we don't have an option. So I guess, what is, what is the story here?
Well, I think the, as I alluded here earlier, I think the, I think you're capturing what the frustration is amongst leaders throughout the state. And, you know, to begin the year, we had, we had that one metric. We had county case rate data. And that was, that is what school districts largely used heading into the school year. And everything came to a head last week when people started to discover more and more that there were inconsistent interpretations and there were inconsistent applications of these, of the, of the different guidance from, from MDE and MDH. As I mentioned earlier, I spoke with, you know, a superintendent in Northwest Minnesota. And this is when the, the question of athletics and activities came up, one day after Anoka Hanipin's decision. And this was a district or a county whose numbers were well over 50 at the time, and yet they were still participating in activities. And the rationale given was that, well, MDH didn't, didn't quote-unquote mandate it or require us to move. And so it was a game of semantics, it seemed like. Clarification came out late, in the middle of last week from the Department of Ed that I think has been helpful. I think what it does is that it allows districts to look not only at that case rate data, but also local data. The district is, you know, doing, doing well at the time, and that can be a factor now. Whereas, whereas just a few days ago, that wasn't the case. A week ago, Monday, the recommendation that came before you was based on the strict guidance that we had been operating under from MDH. And so our, we were getting the advice here from our regional support team that, yes, in fact, it was, this is what you absolutely need to do. That has softened considerably. So ultimately, could the Department of Health come in and say, you must, you know, we had a consultation with the team. We left with a recommendation, which I've shared with you. If we were not to follow the recommendation, could the Department of Health come in and say that we must? Yes, they could. And ultimately, we'd have to do that. To date, though, they, they haven't done that except, I think, maybe a couple of times in a couple of southern Minnesota districts where the numbers were, were out of control and the board made a decision against the Department of Health's recommendation. So I don't know if I'm answering your question, Mr. Chapman. It's, who owns the decision? I think, I think we can't ignore the Department of Health's guidance and their advice through the consultation process. But I suppose ultimately, it's, it's our decision. But there, there could potentially be enforcement.
Could I follow up?
Yes, sir.
What would that enforcement entail if we were?
Directing us to follow their, directing us to follow their recommendation. And then I suppose a lawsuit would ensue if we continue to refuse, and they would.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Beloit.
Dr. Kazmierczak, could you repeat that last part? I couldn't understand through that.
So what would happen if we just simply, if a school district, not, let's say, not White Bear, but let's say a mythical school district would, would just continue to not follow the Department of Health's direction? Ultimately, they would compel that district to follow. They would, there would likely be a lawsuit, and it would go through that, that channel. Specifically, it would be staff members from the Department of Health and Department of Ed would call me, and I would have to explain to them why we made a different decision than what was agreed to in the consultation. If they thought our response was adequate, they might say, okay. If they didn't think it was adequate, then they would just continue up the chain to the point of the commissioner of both state agencies would be directing us to change, including a written directive.
Dr. Newmaster.
Again, I want to express.
Mic.
I do want to express with the mic on, too, that from the literally over 700 inspired messages, petitions, survey comments, you all submitted. We know how passionate all of us are about this and how much we want what's best for our kids. And we want clarity and transparency with how our rules are made. And then we'll do our best for our kids. And I know everyone appreciates the staff, who don't feel appreciated sometimes, definitely, but they are. But we do need to know, and I guess I have a specific question about the clarity of this. And I understand for every superintendent and district, it's been confusing because there have been mixed messages, and we know how that works with our kids. So where is the actual, if I understand it, we don't have to stick to the straight chart that the governor gave us and the Department of Health gave us when you're over 30 or over 40 or whatever. That was a specific guideline, that we can use more of a scapple or a, a direct school-by-school look at it. So then that would make me, as a parent and a school board member, say, how do we know where we are? If we, if you could explain how that works, that would make, I think, a lot of people understand. Because we know where to go to get the state grid that they put up. I think people might like, again, a, you know, just a direction. Where do we go to see where Birch or Otter or Central or whatever is? Do we have that yet?
We haven't provided it at that, that granular of a, of a level. And I don't know if there are any of our nurses here or if Tim or Lisa could talk to the issue of data, data privacy and HIPAA and the fear of people being able to identify who might be, might have certain, might be, might be identifiable. But that, we're providing information on the district's website that is consistent with what the Department of Health provides and how they track internal cases in a school district. But we have, you know, there, there are private data that is, the school district uses. And some of that is very sensitive.
I guess I'm wondering then, let's just say, I mean, there's, you know that rumors swirl always. Whatever's going on, then it gets inflated or deflated or whatever. But to find the accurate numbers, so as a parent, I could say, huh, it's really pretty good in school. My kids are safe. There's not much in-school transmission.
The numbers on the district dashboard are, are accurate. The numbers on the district dashboard are accurate. They are the confirmed cases by week in the school district.
So it's by school, by week reported?
By school district.
By school district?
The school district, yep.
Okay. But we could, if we had a breakout in a, in a particular school, a school district could, apparently, with this shifting.
Then we could work with, again, we would consult with the Department of Health to make a decision about whether or not that building should remain in session. And you've seen that happen. You know, Brainerd Public Schools, for example, shut down their high school for two weeks. Others aren't coming to mind right now. But that, that's the reason why, is because there's been a local outbreak. At that point, a school district works with the Department of Health and gets guidance on what to do.
Okay, I, I understand now a little bit better how that works. How do we make that clear, as clear as we can? I mean, we can't break privacy. But how would we know as a parent? And, and again, I know we tell everyone, don't send your child to school when they're sick. But how well, I guess I said as a board member, how well is that working? As kids come to school and kids have sniffles, that's a big job for our school nurses.
Yeah, I, I don't know if Lisa or Tim, if you have response to.
Oh, is this on? Okay. So it is a big responsibility, and we have a very careful plan that's been laid out on how we respond to students that have different symptoms that are correlated to COVID. And so we have a response to that student, and then we make a kind of a determination on what we're going to do. And then, like we talked about before, we have the care zones. And so we have different things that we're doing. The other thing that we have is we have an evening and weekend COVID contact tracer now that we have in place. And so we're able to get at those symptoms and able to contact trace before the students come onto site. And so that's being able to control the transmission of COVID. And so those are a couple of things that we're doing. With regard to your question, Marge, about what is the individual building COVID data like? The problem with doing that at the individual level like that is there is a HIPAA privacy concern. And so you could have one student or one staff member who has COVID positive. And if we're reporting it as an individual building, you are making it more identifiable of who that person could be in that building. But just so you know, that our data is up to date at all times. And we are going over it with Minnesota Department of Health as well as our regional support team.
Thank you.
Yep. Can I ask a?
Ms. Beloit.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? So there's, we already have correspondence going out to every single parent at each of the schools when there's a, when there's a positive confirmed test. So, you know, my youngest goes to, no, please don't. So we know that we have however many, like my son goes to Central. So every time Central has one that comes out, I, all I have to do is count it up. So I'm not sure I understand the privacy issue there, if we can already identify the number. Plus, if you go to the, the Minnesota Department of Health, they have a list of all of the high schools who have had five or more cases in a week. And we've never been on the list, as far as I know. And I just checked, and we're certainly not on it right now. But they're keeping track of it as well.
So you might have multiple students in a classroom that have COVID exposure. And so whether that's general or close contact, we don't send out individual reports?
No, not individual, but we could list it. So right now, we have, the district has this many students that tested positive this week and this many teachers that have tested positive this week. Why couldn't we just do another thing that listed out Birch, Onika, Hugo, Willow? So you could see how many students and how many teachers from those particular schools? Because the information's going out to those parents anyway.
It's, it's pretty general information. It's a general contact letter, so it's not getting down to the specifics of whether it's a staff or a student. And so when you start delineating that way, you do get into some HIPAA privacy issues.
I guess I can understand the staff versus student would make it break out a little bit. Which part of the HIPAA are we trying to, to comply with?
Sorry?
Which part of the HIPAA agreement are we trying to comply with?
Just protecting people's rights around being, their information going out that they might have been exposed.
Now, is this something that the Department of Health has stated that they don't want us to put those numbers out? I mean, have we been directed not to delineate to that point?
I can look into that and get back to you.
That's the, the work of the response team and our, with our nurses. And that's the, that was the protocol that was adopted. So that would be where we'd follow up.
Ms. Ellison, hold on. Mr. Chapman, did you have a?
Aldafer.
Ms. Ellison.
For now, and then after.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman and Chair Mullen. I have a follow-up question for this as well, Ms. Orne. So when we have a confirmed case in school, it's a two-week quarantine at home, right? And then if you have direct exposure, so if it was somebody in my kid's class, then my kid would also have to quarantine, right? So then, what if that kid who's in quarantine then gets tested positive for COVID while they're at home? That, that, would that be another school case then? And do we count that as some of our cases? Because I guess that, that leads me to kind of trying to understand the number of cases. If we're not counting the ones that are testing positive once they're home on quarantine, where they could be traced back to school, how does that affect our numbers?
Well, we are counting those.
So you're, so you're counting the ones that, like, are, they're on quarantine, and they are away from school for a couple of days, and then they test positive?
It depends on their contact before they left school.
Okay. What, could you clarify what, what that means?
So if they were not at close contact and they were at general exposure, and they became positive over the time of their quarantine, and I would probably need to defer to the nurse, lead nurses, to get to this level of detail. But my understanding is at that point, we would count them if they had had contact on this, on our grounds.
And, and the reason I'm asking that question is because if we're using local data in addition to county data, I think it's really important to understand how that data shakes out. Because if the Department of Health, I mean, this is our lead health organization in this state. And if they're telling us, you know, these are the county numbers to consider, and you can also factor in your local numbers, I just want to make sure that what we're seeing is accurate numbers, including kids who may have tested positive after they've gone home on quarantine with a school exposure. So the, the reason I'm asking is I just want to make sure that our metrics are taking into consideration all of these things. So our numbers aren't, you know, looking better than they might be. So that's why I'm asking.
Sure, I can bring back some clarification on that to the group. I will tell you, though, we had very detailed information that we shared with Dr. Kazmierczak that was viewed by the regional COVID support team. And so they have a very deep understanding of what's going on in each of our buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chapman.
Got to get the. Okay, all right. In terms of, you know, we, we hear so much about the physical health aspect of this whole thing. And Ms. Orne, I don't know if you're the one to speak to this or what. But what is the Department of Health and the Department of Education doing to track what's going on as far as the mental health? And the, the non-physical issues that our people, particularly our students, could be facing out there? I've read email after email after email suggesting that there is a growing problem. I see it, quite frankly, in, in some of my own household as far as what's going on in the distance learning aspect of things. So I'm just curious, it seems like the Department of Health and the Department of Education are focused almost exclusively, or at least that's what's being reported, on the physical aspect of this whole thing. But I think, I would argue that there is a pandemic out there or on the verge of a pandemic of a mental health crisis. So what is being, I guess I'm wondering what information you can share tonight, if any, that you may know about what they're doing besides showing us numbers of case counts of who's got and who doesn't have COVID?
I don't know of anything specifically that the Minnesota Department of Health or MDE is doing at this time around research in mental health during the course of the pandemic. I know as a district that we're prioritizing that through our counselors, our social workers, and our school psychologists. So as a district, we are prioritizing that. I can't speak to what MDH and MDE are doing at this time.
Good night. I just find it interesting that supposedly, it sounds like, anyway, the state could come in and take issue with what we are doing on the physical side of things, but not taking into account, it seems, on what's happening on the mental health side of things. That just is what appears to mean. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson.
I guess this would kind of go along with Ms. Ellison's questions. Put my notes on the side. So in all the research that I have been doing, the incubation period with COVID is from three to 14 days. And then the symptoms typically appear within the four to five-day period. And you are the most contagious 48 to 72 hours before you have symptoms. So if we're sending kids home to quarantine because they've had exposure, how can we be sure? Because there's also a lot of talk going around that there are PACs out there, groups of people who are refusing to have their children tested, also refusing to have them for many different reasons. All of them, to me, are, are not good reasons because that doesn't allow us to know what the numbers actually are. So that would kind of say, if these kids are going home because they had direct exposure and they were asked to quarantine, how could we know? Is there a way that if, you know, the child has to stay home for the two-week quarantine period, yet they come up with symptoms within four to five days of being exposed, and they're not coming back in them, in that two-week period? Is there a way that we can, how? not coming back in them, in that two week period, is there a way that we can, how are we tracking those numbers? Is, I mean, do we know if a kid is home and they get positive COVID test within that time period? Then are we contacting people that that child had close contact with before they started their quarantine period?
Yeah, so there's a lot of nuances in what you're asking there, but I can tell you that if they do become positive over the course of the time that they're on quarantine, our health staff are reaching out to parents during that period of quarantine to make sure that, A, if they have decided to get a test, that we know the results of that test, or B, if they haven't, are they're not seeking a test that we ensure that they're staying home during the point of their quarantine? With regard to the time of period of being the most contagious, we always do count back to that time of the, being the most contagious and what is the close contacts during that period.
Okay. And then is there, and I'm not sure if you're the right person for this, but I, I've asked this question before. Do we have numbers on how many quarantines we've had to implement, including staff? I mean, there's, I've heard that we've quarantined an entire elementary classroom due to exposure, and I'm just wondering if we're keeping track of those numbers and if that's something at least we as a board could look at and see so that we're knowing how this is affecting our buildings? Because if we're going to talk about mental health, we also have to talk about the mental health of our staff and our educators, because their mental health is also suffering during all of this. So it's not just about the students. I am a parent, I have students in the district. I have one distance learning and one hybrid learning, and we are doing the best that we can too, but I also know that this goes beyond just the students. It's the people that work in the buildings that we also have to consider. So is there a way we can get that information? Do we have that?
I absolutely do have that information, so I can share that with you.
Great.
Thank you.
Ms. Ellison?
I wanted to follow up on both Mr. Chapman and then what Ms. Thompson said, that I, I think that any discussion of mental health has to include our teachers and staff. And so I guess my, my question is then, I was glad to see, I mean, I've got four kids in the district and was glad to see that my seventh grader got an email from her counselor about mental health resources available to her. And so I, I want to make sure that for our educators, that they feel supported as well. Because the question that I have is about staffing. Do we, are we prepared, do we have enough staffing right now? Due to quarantines and the lack of subs? And not just for the short term, I also want to make sure we're considering staffing for the long term. And I'm, I'm anxious about that. I know that our teachers are doing the very best that they can, and they're working miracles, quite honestly, and we can't have schools without staff. So I would like to know how we're supporting our teachers' mental health in addition to our students' mental health, which I think is incredibly important? And what is our short term and long term situation for staff?
So when we're looking at that, one thing, and this is not to belittle the challenge that we're facing right now, but I do just want to create the context that there's really minus perhaps a workshop in the beginning of the school year, and there's rarely a day where we're perfectly staffed. And so I just want to speak to that, but we are facing really significant challenges right now. And that's very real. And we're solving those challenges, for the most part, by asking people to do more that are already working incredibly hard. So I want to acknowledge that because that's completely legitimate within our system. So for the most part, when we're experiencing, when we have a need for a sub, for instance, we're asking our existing staff members to step up and do more in those cases. It's, it's been exceedingly difficult to find, to find substitutes that are willing to come in and perform those services. And we've been actively recruiting, we've also looked at our compensation, et cetera. So we've been aggressive on those fronts to try to attract and retain substitutes that can provide those services. And that goes beyond just teachers, that goes across our system. It's a, it's a very significant challenge. What I would say is, right now, we're staffed, we're doing this, we're creating a safe environment for students in that regard, but it's certainly not, not easy. And when you look to the future, I think our commitment from the beginning of this has been, we're going to ensure that we're able to, to provide a safe environment, or else we're going to need to look at our model. And so Dr. Kasmercheck talked, spoke to that earlier, that we may wind up in a situation. And, and in some instances, we've, we've been very close there, where we're not able to offer the programming in the way that we would choose to first because of a staffing shortage. And I think that it is foreseeable that we'll wind up in that place. And we've walked through that and we'll make sure that we're able to, to deal with that as possible. So we'll make sure that we're looking at that at the building level, the grade level, and assessing what we're able to provide. We're certainly not going to ever see the situation occur in which we're offering programming that we're not able to offer safely.
Ms. Ellison?
Follow up on that?
Yes.
Mr. Mons. So when you say we're not going to offer programming that we can't offer safely, so that leads me to kind of putting all of these pieces together and seeing the recommendations from MDE, MDH, what's happening in our buildings, the fact that, just the realness of, it takes a lot of people to educate a child. Are we going to be then in a position where if it's not safe because we don't have enough people teaching our students or able to support our students, then that would necessitate a shift?
Yes, and whether, and how big that shift is would depend on what that looks like. But I think the two things that would precipitate a shift like that would be, number one, case rates within our system, the local environment, et cetera. Number two would be that inability to appropriately staff.
Because we're also talking about bus drivers, nutrition services, special education services, counselors, and classroom teachers.
Absolutely.
And so if, if what's happening here is they are doing more, then we are, it feels like a, a breaking point. And if, if our number one priority here is to ensure that our kids are educated and safe, I, I want to make sure that we take that into consideration in these decisions we're making. So it, it's, it's helpful for me to hear that, the honesty of that answer, that this is not, this is not easy for staffing. So thank you.
Yep. Any other question? Dr. Arcan?
So we, we talked a lot about mental health, and I know we've also talked, you know, I've been into research, that if we voluntarily go to distance learning, like we do, if we would voluntarily on the 17th go to distance learning, we can continue to offer our extracurricular activities. So my question is, what percent of our students are participating in extracurricular? And then what are we going to do for the rest of the students? How do we support them? What are we putting in place for them? I guess that would be my biggest question. I don't know if you guys know the percentage. Maybe you want to pop up, I can, yeah. So the, the question of voluntarily entering, that is where I think the guidance has shifted to where they're, they're essentially not going to say they're mandating anybody. And so therefore, you're, you're making the local decision to make that move, and therefore you can continue with activities. So that's, that's what's changed last week on activities. And then Brian Peliquin is our activities director. If he wants to field the, what percentage of students are in activities?
Yeah, I would say this fall, we had approximately 540 kids participate, excuse me, in extracurricular activities. And historically, over the course of a year at the high school level, at least 60% of our kids are participating in activities on, on a yearly basis. And as far as what to do with the kids that are not, that I can't answer, other than try to get them involved. So.
Dr. Gillespie?
Our principals, I have Anne Nelson here, our principal at North Campus, they're looking at what other ways we can wrap around services to support our students. So she's going to talk in general about what we're looking at as one idea. And then Don Bosch is looking at stuff for South Campus and Gretchen Harriman at the ALC. So we're beginning to talk about different supports that we can offer for students.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, well, I think that there's kind of two branches of this. One is the academic support. And so we're looking closely at students who are receiving I grades currently and no grades currently, and, and seeing how we can group them together in a way that feels good to them with teachers that they trust to offer academic tutoring, organization, getting them feeling they're supported academically. The other piece is, when we surveyed students, they said that they wanted to have fun, that they miss having fun together. So we've done a lot of really cool things, at least at North Campus. So there's this thing called the goose chase that we've done, which is like a scavenger hunt in a safe way, where students can take photos and upload them, and they can win prizes. We do building wide games that students can participate in virtually, so whether they're at home or in the building. And then again, they can win some prizes. So we're trying to do things where we can infuse some of the fun, because I think that connection and having fun really does play into the mental health piece, and it's what the students are asking for. So we, we're going to look at supporting them academically, but really look at how can we support them feeling like they're part of the community, the school community?
Dr. Arcan, did you have a follow up? Ms. Boyd? I know, Ms. Boyd, you had a question?
Is it on? Yes. So I know we received many, many, many emails regarding what our position was as opposed to the districts that surround us. So I know everything has been changing, and a lot of these schools have been changing too, but I went online today and took a look at the surrounding districts around us, just to give everybody context. Forest Lake is moving their elementary to hybrid as of November 10th. They're not going to have a secondary change, but have told their people to be prepared to move to distance learning with the increasing numbers we're seeing. Mod Amedia happens to be meeting tonight to go over their numbers. They have had actually, well, let me back up. Centennial delayed the shift to DL for now, but they look like they're pretty much in the same boat we are with their secondary going to eventually move to DL and their elementary staying hybrid for now. North St. Paul goes to distance learning November 2nd, so today they made the shift. So we're not an outlier in this. I know Woodbury is pretty much the same way. Everyone's looking at these increase in numbers. I was wondering if you could go over the numbers just real quick that we receive at the county level? Because I don't know how many people go on and actually take a look at our website, at our COVID dashboard that tells us what the different county numbers are. But we're over 30 in each of the counties, and that is minus the, the prison numbers. So I just, and we're moving, as far as I know, we are trending upward towards 40 for the next, those are the unofficial numbers that we've been given that are going to be coming out. So what I'm wondering is, if we're looking at the county numbers and we're also looking at this scalpel approach, what's our threshold for the county numbers? What's our threshold for within our own schools? Because I, right now, we have 13 teachers total that have been tested, or have tested positive for COVID, and 31 students. And that's out of our 10,000, some students and teachers, so it's fairly low, but a lot of those numbers could come from one school. So are we looking at what's going to be our threshold going forward with numbers rising? I just don't like this, hey, we're going to work with each of the schools individually, and we're going to come up with this scalpel approach to, you know, how we're going to handle this. Well, we need some kind of guidance for what this should look like and what this shouldn't look like. I mean, is five too many? Is 10 too many? Is 15 too many? How do we know? What's their guidance on what's too many?
The Department of Health, when we met with them on Friday, they, they didn't offer, you know, a standard.
See, that's really incredibly frustrating to me that they won't give us an answer on something, because we, we stand out there and try to do the best we can to say, these are the numbers that we've been given, this is the guidance that we've been given. And then they say, well, let's do a scalpel approach. Okay, great. What's the scalpel approach and what's the threshold? But they won't give us that either?
There's not a threshold for, it, it's whether or not you can continue to operate, that's one of them, but they don't, they won't give us a number. They won't say X percent of staff or students. They haven't done that.
So then, do we think that we, do we then base it on if we have an outbreak in the school, say, because so far, it doesn't look like we've had, you know, a quote unquote outbreak. I mean, we've maybe had transmission from one person to the second person, but I don't think it's gone any further than that, as far as I know. So if we have an outbreak, is, do we consider that a threshold?
Yes.
Are we?
Yep, so we would work with them and, yep, and they would say, you know, that we need to, we need to take action at that site. Yep.
It's just that I can see why teachers are frustrated, I can see why parents are frustrated, I can see why the administration is frustrated, because the guidance is just no guidance whatsoever. I mean, there are some numbers, but it's not clear. I mean, I sent one of our emails to it, it's clear as mud what it actually is. So I guess going forward, I know one of the things that we look at are staffing issues, and that's incredibly important going forward. So we've got some of these numbers, we've got outbreaks, we have staffing issues. Would we say that that's the main factors that, that we're looking at beyond, all of a sudden, all of our bus drivers come down with it and we can't get anybody anywhere?
So operational issues, yep.
Operational issues. Okay. So then my next question is about the tier one childcare. So I have some concerned about, concerns moving them to, because they're little, moving them to a building that isn't built for their size. I mean, you know, toilets are up to here and they're down here. So do we think, have we generously applied the, too generously applied, who can take advantage of the tier one childcare? And do we need to pull back on that?
Yeah. Too generously, meaning districts can offer tier one childcare to a family that has either one or two tier one workers, and we've offered it to families who have one. Other districts have offered it only to those who have, who are both parents, or if it's a single parent, just that one parent would, would get it in either case. That is something we've been talking about, that we may need to pull back on that, given the, the strain on the, on the system that that's creating.
I mean, I think the strain on the system justifies taking a look and those parents actually maybe identifying themselves, saying, if I don't need this, you know, this is putting a strain on the system and I need to pull back as well.
Well, they might not say they don't need it, but it would be, we would, yeah, we would pull, we would just change, with it, with enough advanced warning, we would make a change, and that would eliminate, you know, I don't know what percentage of students participating in tier one, but yes, that's something we've talked about.
So with the changes as well, because it looks like eventually all of these high schools are going to be moving to distance learning, and we can make some instructional changes for elementary and secondary and possibly, or maybe not for high school, because that's kind of a different nut. But are we looking at doing a shift to just distance learning teachers only for distance learners instead of breaking it up, having the teachers do distance learning and hybrid at the same time?
Yeah, I think this would be a good time for our elementary principals to talk through what we're working on right now.
So I have four colleagues with us, John Leininger, principal at Metosca, Sarah Svier, principal at Badness, Dan Schmidt, principal at Lincoln, and Brian Morris, principal at Hugo, and they've been working with their teachers. So they'll share a little bit what they've been talking about this week.
Again, John Leininger, Principal of Metosca International. I'm trying to remember exactly what your question might exactly be.
Are we changing some of, we've started, we have all the teachers, at least at the elementary level, they're doing hybrid along with teaching their distance learners at the same time.
Correct.
So are we able to make the shift to take some of the pressure off those teachers? Because I know a lot of them are at the cracking point with what they're doing. Do we have enough teachers that could just do distance learning only?
It's a, it's a very good question, and it's a very complex question, so I'll try to sort of give a little bit of context, because a lot of it has to do with the number of, number of seats we would have in a specific classroom, how many tier one, how many distance we would have in a specific classroom, how many tier-one, how many distance learners. So it's hard to put a cookie-cutter approach in all of our schools, because some of our schools might have 40% distance learning, some of us might have 21%. And so the number of actual students who are taking seats in each of those classrooms would affect that. So as principals, we've been having, you know, daily conversations since the year started about how best can we do this? And so where we can, we've all agreed that we will put single distance-learning teachers with those distance learners, if that's possible.
But is it within the school, or are we talking like a distance learner? It could be a distance-learning teacher for, for your school, for your school, for your school, for your school.
It's a great question. Our preference is always to keep students in their school with their classroom, homeroom teacher.
But if it's a distance, what does it matter at that point?
Because of the relationships that they're building with those teachers from the beginning of the year, and the connections and relationships they've been building with their classmates within the school. So I would say, from some of the things that we're talking about, the answer wouldn't, would, is never, we would never do that. But our preference always would be, especially with our littlest, is to keep them connected with their teacher and with their classmates. But we know in some cases, that's not always possible. And so then we look at the next layer. Okay, well, if that's not possible here, what is our next best option? Provide a good education, make sure they're safe, and stay connected with their, with their community and with their teachers.
So how often are we actually doing that now, within each of the different schools? Do we, do we know?
We are all going to be very different, but...
It varies, it varies by school, and like John mentioned, percentage of distance learners and size of school. And so this week, they've been working together with their leadership teams, and also together across elementary schools to see what can we do in terms of combining resources, and also what can they work on with their teachers that have established relationships with their students, and what would feel like the best support for the teachers right now.
Because I've, I know you've talked with other, other schools, and I know some have created like distance-learning academies and different things like that, where you are taking the distance-learning students, because they've all chosen to do distance learning for one reason or another, because they, you know, for the safety or whatever. But they all have, you know, there's one teacher that teaches all of those kids, so they kind of create their own community in and of itself. And I just, I'm just trying to, to think outside the box of what we're doing, just because the, the pressure that's on the teachers right now. And I know, I'm sure you guys hear it daily. I mean, we do too, but I'm sure, I'm sure you guys hear a lot more than we do. But, I mean, they need some kind of change, because it's, there's a lot that they are trying to do that's just... Teaching three different ways has got to be the most difficult thing we've ever asked them to do, for sure. Yeah, for sure.
You're bringing up a really good point. And what we've noticed now over the last couple of months is that we've crossed, I use the term a threshold, with the elementary teachers. This tells you how special they are and the qualities that they bring to our field of education. At the start of the year, in August, maybe early September, it would have been feasible to really think about a separate distance learner at that point, but it wasn't our situation at that time. Now that the classroom teachers have built up a relationship with the distance learners as well as the hybrid learners, it's a little bit more difficult for them just to let go and to allow someone else come in and, and to just be supportive of those distance learners. So what we've been doing is been meeting with individual teams and trying to get their story, to try to figure out where we go forward to support them as a classroom teacher, but not sever that special relationship and bond that they've already started to build with those students. That's a very important element to address and to be sensitive to during this time, right now of the year.
Okay.
I was going to add one other thing too, that as we asked families to tell us what their choice was going to be for the second quarter then semester, our numbers changed in each of, each of our buildings and each of our grade levels of classrooms. And so we're actually currently looking at that, as Dan mentioned. We're, we've met with each and every teacher and team and saying, where are we at? What do the numbers look like? What are the needs? What are the needs of the students? What are the needs of the teachers? So then we can put, plan to make adjustments as we go into it. I know all of us have had conversations with our, our parents and our communities that says, when we walked into this in the beginning of the year, we knew that there, that some changes might need to be made. That we would always make sure to, as we know more about the pandemic, we know more about how to teach in this environment, we're not afraid to make those changes for the best interest of our children. And so we'll make those changes where needed in, in conversation with our teachers and families.
I just have one last thing, and then, so I, I know we've got teachers that are beyond frustrated with, with the different changes that are going on, and there's not, there hasn't been a whole lot that we can do about it one way or the other, because it's, everything is fluid at this point. And we're, we're feeling the frustration from the parents. And so at this point, I think one of the best things that we can possibly do is to try and just lay it all out and be as transparent as possible with, with why we're making the decisions that we are. Being as transparent with the teacher or the, with the teachers, saying, this is what may happen. This may not happen. I know we're doing a lot of that, but I think we can communicate more and better with everybody. Sometimes too much information's bad, but I think at a time like this, too much information is probably a good thing. Like, I, I still don't understand why we can't get all of those numbers on our dashboard, and I would encourage us to take a look at doing that, so that we know, you know, if my child is in Central, I want to know how many kids have it, so I know whether or not, eh, maybe I should pull my kid to, to distance learning. You know, there's different things like that that make it easier to access the information, make it plain, and then let everybody know what's coming as soon as we can possibly do that. And I know it isn't always possible to do that. But I think we need to make a greater effort at communicating what we're doing, why we're doing, and when we're doing it, to make sure that the frustration level can come down. So, thank you, everybody. I know you're working extremely hard.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. Ms. Ellison?
Thank you, Ms. Boyd, for expressing the frustration at the, for the Department of Health's kind of wiffly-waffling about the numbers. I think that's really frustrating as well. But something that, that you said that I want to kind of latch on to, when you're, when we're talking about, like, what is our threshold, and is our threshold an outbreak? And without other, without other parameters from the MDH, is that where we're left? And if that's the case, that feels too late to me. An outbreak is too late to put our kids in danger, to put our, our staff in danger. And I'm worried that if we wait until that point, then... I'm worried about waiting to that point. And so is it better than to be preventative, knowing what we know about the county numbers, knowing that the numbers are going up, knowing that we're entering into holiday season, and winter, and cold and flu, I mean, all of these like perfect storm things are coming together? And so as much as, I mean, my kids are all in hybrid. I, I want them to stay in hybrid. But if that's our threshold, I think we really need to think about that and take precautions at this point in time. When we, like Ms. Boyd said, a lot of these schools are heading into DL, we are likely headed there at some point. So I just, I just wanted to, to put that out there, like, are we reacting? Or are we, are we being reactionary, or are we being preventative?
Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Dr. Neumaster?
I guess what I'm thinking about, again, is the concept of the distance teacher, which I know was brought up in conversation last summer when people looked at models. And it seems that we're through with a, oops, no, I'm on. We're at the end of a quarter. If people are still solid with their choice to be distance, it seems reasonable that they accept they're a distance classroom. And the advantage of a distance classroom is not that you're seating them in schools they're not attending, which they may well attend another year, but not this year or this semester. So you have a dedicated teacher online that's there four days a week or whatever to be with them and whoever else is the fourth grade or even the split class. Because even in brick-and-mortar schools, my kids have been in a one, two, or a three, four, depending, and grouping. So I would hope we really do look at the learning that can take place with a distance class and the camaraderie that those kids build up. And that's not to devalue the heroic efforts they've had, and there's no reason they can't do communications. We do everything online right now. But I hope we seriously look at the concept of a distance teacher. And whether it's a distance science teacher who can teach three different sections, gathering... It's easier for us to imagine that in middle school and high school with specialties. But, you know, whether you're a country school or a split class, a distance teacher, to me, makes sense rather than trying to have some soul do everything. And I know you all love your kids and value your relationships, but sometimes when you're pushing so hard, it's hard to know when it's okay to make a change. So I'd hope you might feel comfortable with the concept of a distance teacher. We've sure all looked at it and thought about it since last spring. So that's one thing. And my only other question that I had highlighted in yellow on my laptop was the various conversations about tier-one. And we talk about transitions for kids. And I think the transition of the tier-one babies needs to really be looked at. They sure don't fit at North or South, just because North or South kids happen to be on distance, and there are some rooms available. They probably need a step still to use the bathrooms. So honestly, I hope we don't do that to our little kids, and that we really take a look at that again. And that look includes every classroom teacher that has talked about this, because literally, I got hundreds of, and many of them were about tier-one kids. And how do we take care of these babies, and what's best for them? And another transition to a high school or the gathering room at a local, wherever, might not be the best either. So please have everybody involved, make it transparent and not a surprise, so we do the best for those little ones. Because high school's important, middle school's important. But I look at those kindergartners and think, that's too much. So I'm gonna let that go. And this is tough times, and everybody's working hard, but don't forget transitions for the little ones, too.
Well, I don't have a solution, Marge, but, no, and that's, that's part of the reason we paused this week, because the idea was that if we were to, if we were to pull tier-ones out of the elementaries, that we could address some of these other issues. But then that became very unpalatable. So that's why we hit the pause button on that. So it's, it's not, I mean, there would still be a chance that our, that tier-one students might end up in a different location, which we're doing right now. We have a different spot for some, but that, that isn't our, that isn't our ideal. But, so. I, I think we agree with you. That's what I'm saying, yep.
And I do think that if we have distance teachers and that burden is removed from the classroom, the occasional tier-one student might not be as big a variable that you have to consider.
Right, and we're balancing that, we're balancing the tier-one issue with the distance-learning issue. And that's why it's a building-by-building approach and trying to figure it out at, at that level. And to the point that we, if we get to the point where we just, we need to move some of the tier-ones to a different model, either within the school, in a pod, or in a different location, then that's where we'll be. It won't be because we're just making a blanket approach at this point, which is, which was the thinking a couple of weeks ago, and then once we really got in, we thought, no, this is not, this is not the best we can do. So.
Mr. Chapman?
There we go, there we go. I want to follow up earlier, and I'm glad you called me out on it, Ms. Ellison, with regard to the mental health. I totally agree with you in terms of the staff. Any organization, if the individuals that are doing the heavy lifting and the work, if they're not healthy, we got a big problem on our hands. So I appreciate that. I mentioned students. I guess where I was coming from is just, I had students on my mind frustrated. What you're hearing from me tonight is just a frustration, and I think we all share this, with what I consider the lack of direction, the lack of leadership coming from MDH and MDE. You know, getting back to the whole activities question, the one email that we received as a board from that MDH employee suggested that distance learning, if we go to distance learning, there will not be activities allowed. And this person claimed that they had looked at our plan, the district's plan. They also claimed that they are apparently in an enforcement area. So I don't know what to believe coming from MDH and MDE these days. My guess is that's going to change again. So I, I'm very angry right now with the lack of leadership coming from the state level. In terms of struggling with distance learning, I do wonder, the distance-learning model isn't fit for everybody. I mean, that's the hard fact of the matter. A cookie-cutter approach is not going to work, I don't think, in every case. So the question that I have is, when we go, assuming we go to distance learning, what are we going to do with the kids that are struggling already with being home two, three days out of the week and aren't cutting it? What is the plan?
Yeah, we do have a plan. I don't, who wants to take this one? Allison, can you speak to it, or? So there is, there is guidance when you move to a, a distance learning model that you, you are able to still bring students in. And there's, there are different, different reasons for bringing in students, students who might be struggling. I know Ms. Nelson talked about students who are, who have incompletes, or who are, I forget what else, what other criteria was used. But, so those students can be targeted to be brought in. You know, Ms. Orne could speak to students with special needs and what they, what we can do for them. English-language learners, we can work with them on an in-person basis. So maybe I answered it, but Dr. Gillespie, if you have anything else to add, there, there is flexibility within, within the schools to be able to do that for the struggling learner.
Yeah, there's a lot of flexibility. And when we met with the regional support team, they suggested that we start the first week at distance learning, and then they would actually help us, had some school districts to work with, and that we start looking at our data and, and start bringing kids and students back in based on students, you know, and that would include students in mental health and how we collect that data. And we've started looking at how would we survey our students and make sure that we're, we're creating that, that those supports in school and getting school, kids back in school at a safe rate. And they're calling it targeted support. So we can bring students back in school with special needs, ELL, and then targeted supports for academics. And then we know when our students are struggling with mental health, they have a hard time accessing their academics. So we would look at that wraparound services as a team and support our administrators as they work with their student support team and look at how students are doing. So there's a lot of flexibility in getting kids back in school.
So we would potentially be bringing some kids back, assuming that the parents were open to that?
Yep.
Okay.
Additionally, you know, you can look at different supports in terms of how students are connecting synchronously with their teachers and synchronously with each other. So families who aren't comfortable students coming into school, there's also ways to make sure that we're still meeting that socially-emotional health through synchronous learning opportunities.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, I do have one other question, and that has to do with, I guess I'm wondering what the, how the state views private schools. Are they going to be allowed to get away with staying in session, or is this just applied to public schools? The funding, I know that they don't get state funding and so forth, but they're touting that, I mean, we've got one that, just down the road from us, a large one that's touting that they've had no incidents, that their kids are getting much more educated than our, than public kids.
They're using, they're using, they're using the pandemic as a marketing tool.
Correct.
Because they're playing by a different.
Excuse us, come on, we're trying to conduct the meeting, please. By Thanksgiving, our kids went an entire year of hybrid, you are failing our children, our kids!
Hey, excuse me, we're trying to conduct the meeting. We appreciate the comments, but we're trying to conduct the meeting.
So, pub, public schools play by a different set of rules. Private, private schools play by a different set of rules than public schools. So, no, they are not bound to the same.
So you're saying that MDE and MDH are going to, regardless of what happens in the community, they're gonna allow these private schools to continue, but we have to shut, potentially shut down?
Yeah.
We play by, yeah, we play by different rules, public schools, yeah.
Where's the leadership? Where's the equity of that?
It's been a rule that's beginning, five days, seven days.
Ms. Thompson?
My question was in regard to the tier one students. I had, in the beginning, we were told that we had to help any one tier one if they had two parents, I believe was the original guidance, and then they changed it on us. Or was it two student, or two parents in the beginning, and then it switched to, or it was one parent and then they switched it to two?
I believe it was, it was clear from the beginning, but if Tim Mauer, somebody's here to correct that. I think the option was, the initial guidance included either one or two.
Yeah, because I, I know that now we're, I know they changed it on us, like they've changed a lot of stuff on us within two weeks of, before school started. And now we, we have decided to allow any tier one family, you know, as long as they had one tier one worker in their household, that we would be taking their students. I have heard that because of our need to take the tier one students, that we have classrooms where we have students who have special needs that we don't have the resources for in the classroom because the elementary classroom has too many tier one students. So this just goes back to the tier one issue again, and I'm hoping that we can implement the plan that we would only take tier one students if both family members are worker, are tier one workers. Because there's also fam, there, and I have spoken with teachers who have family member, or have students in their classroom whose families only have one tier one worker working out of the household and another parent at the home, and they are sending their child into the classroom, and then it's taking away from our students. And for me, the biggest issue is that I've heard it's taking away from the ability to have students with IEPs and other more special needs to be in that classroom with their paras, because the classroom is overfull with too many students because of the tier one students being in there. So I think I would really like us to reconsider that as part of our plan for whatever we implement, that both parents have to be tier one workers in order for their child or children to be able to take advantage of the, of the mandate. I understand that this may affect, you know, some of our own staff, and I, I feel bad about that, but I think the overwhelming thing that I have heard from teachers, besides the multiple things that we're asking them to do right now, is, and it isn't, it's a building-by-building scenario, as, as it all is, but for many of the teachers, their biggest issue is, are having all those tier one students in the classroom all the time, where they're having nineteen students in a classroom. To me, that's, if their normal classroom rate is twenty-one or twenty-three students, and they're at nineteen, that I don't see where we're at that fifty percent population in the classroom. So is that something that we are now, I've heard it said a couple times, but I, I guess I just am looking for a little more clearance if we are actually considering going to...
We've, we've, we've considered it, but, and we certainly can do that, but just know that it'll be hundreds of, hundreds of families impacted. So it's not an easy, it's not a decision without consequence.
And I, and I under, I, I know, and I, I understand that, I guess, but I, we're overwhelmed, right? And we, we don't have the resources that we need, and I think if it is taking away from students who need our services, but we can't provide it because families are taking advantage, and I don't want to say that all of the families are taking advantage, because I understand that that is not the case. But if there are families that are taking advantage of that, then I, I would want that to be something that we look at, as well as now hearing from teachers who are saying that they have students in their distance learning models who play sports in our schools. These same parents are now advocating for their children not to lose their activity, yet their child is distance learning right now. And they are choosing the distance learning model because they don't want their child to have to quarantine and lose out on playing the sport. If we are, to me, this is a privilege, a privilege that is not allowed to all of the families in our district. If you want your child to play a sport, your child needs to be in a hybrid model. Now, we are, we have to go to distance learning because our numbers are rising, and they are gonna keep going up, because the biggest spread is the community spread. And if people want to keep our schools open, what we need to do are other things. We need to perhaps stop hanging out and doing other activities that are causing the numbers to rise right now. So is this something that we can track? Do we actually know if we have students currently doing the distance learning model who are also playing sports in our school district?
I, I don't know a number. I would guess we do. And I think we would be hard-pressed to say you couldn't participate in activities if you chose distance learning. I think that would be a problem to go, come down with that sort of a change.
Go ahead, Dr. Arcan.
Actually, it's Ms. Beloit first, and then it's Dr. Arcan.
Same rule.
There you go.
There we go. Same rules apply for being able to participate in sports if you're in distance learning as opposed to a hundred percent in person, correct? There's a threshold for your GPA? Will all of that stuff still be in place?
It is still in place.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dr. Arcan?
And my thought is, if, if we're gonna say that student athletes have to participate in the hybrid model, I'm afraid then we're telling, we're encouraging them not to report or not to get tested when they get affected, because they've had to come to school. And there, again, I don't want to center on one group of students because they're extracurricular, they have to participate in this model. I want to see them to have equal access. So that would be my concern. If we're gonna have it open, then they should have that option.
Dr. Neumaster?
And just a little aside on that from my age and historical perspective, our home school students have always been able to participate, and that would be similar to a distance learning student participating. So it's nothing new. Reason for things might be different, but the actual fact of it is the same sort of thing. And the other comment I just wanted to make, as long as I have the mic for the moment, many, many comments came through saying that people were thankful for every single day their kids were in school. And that came through clearly. We know all of our kids need relationships, and in-person, we know, is the best. We maybe can't do it at a particular time, but the same thing over and over was expressed. Our kids need this. If we have to go to distance, don't set some far-off end a quarter, end a semester, make the transition back as soon as we can.
Ms. Thompson?
I guess my, my comment was because these parents were also advocating for keeping hybrid going. To me, it just seems a little bit of a, to say that you want to keep hybrid going so that the sports can continue, and I understand wanting our kids to hack activities, my child plays sports as well. It just seems that to say you want hybrid to stay open because that would allow, at the time, MDH guidance was saying, the only way we could keep activities going was if we kept the hybrid model going. So then for us to learn that students in our district were doing distance learning just for that reason, to me, seemed to be not, I, I just didn't like that. And then I had another point, but now I lost what my point was. I forgot, so, sorry. Somebody else has anything?
Are there questions, comments? Ms. Beloit?
I just think there's, just basically two points, I think, that we need to make sure that the community at large understands. If, the district is one of the largest providers of childcare in the area, so part of the concern with tier one, which I have as well, where do those parents then go? Well, we have the other services, but they still have to be in the building in order to provide those services, because there aren't any all, there aren't a lot of alternatives in the area. And then the other thing is, is people don't understand, when we're talking public versus private, there's a lot of things that public schools are asked to do for every single person in the community, whether you go to public school or not. Anyone can come for, for the activities, anyone can, food, there's another one. Right now, and I hope everybody in the district knows and is passing it on, breakfast and lunch, we provide that for all of the students. So we are one of the biggest providers of food right now as a district. So when everyone is looking at all these different things, we're mandated to do all these things. We don't get a choice. And we also don't get the funding. We are not provided funding for the childcare of these tier one workers, yet we have to provide those things. So when we're talking about all of these different things between public and private, everyone needs to really dig in and understand the difference between those two things. Why, why does a private school not have to do those things, and why does a public school have to? And it's really important, because a lot of the jobs in this community are through the district, the food's coming from the district, childcare is coming through the district, and I think everyone needs to take a look at that. So that's it, thank you.
Are there questions? Ms. Thompson?
Back to the activities. So if we keep the activities going while we're doing distance learning, how are we gonna ensure, are we providing transportation? I, I have a concern about our students of Black Indigenous People of Color category, because oftentimes, they are our stu, right, well, they are our students right now who are most affected by COVID, as in, you know, catching it and, and, and having consequences from catching it. So a lot of them are distance learning right now for that reason. Maybe they could participate in the sports activity because they would have less exposure, they would be with their, you know, it's, it would be considered a pod, because you'd be with your team. Is there a way that we can, I mean, is this something, A, that we can do? I know, as Ms. Beloit just mentioned, you know, funding, we, we all know what the numbers are, we've been looking at them, and they're, they're not looking good, and they're gonna only get worse. Is this something we're considering? I have own experience with a child who played football for the high school team in the last couple of years, and he had to ride his bike from Hugo to South Campus every day to get there. That was his only way of getting there on non-school days. Otherwise, on school days, he rode the activities bus. So this is something, you know, are we thinking of these students, and do we have a plan as to how we can help ensure that they get to take part in this privilege that we're allowing to our...
Brian, do you have any comments on transportation? Or Tim, do you have any comments on, are you, so are you asking, a bus picks up a student at three o'clock to take him to practice and then gives him a ride home?
I, I guess that's, I mean, I know that's not what we've normally done, but is that something we're talking about, so that we can ensure that all of our students have access to this, not just our privileged students?
And I would say at, at this point so far in the fall, transportation has been a challenge, just like anything else, with us struggling to find bus drivers and busing. That is definitely something that we would have to work with the Transportation Department on. I would think that we would have the benefit of not having to run regular routes at the high school level from a bus driver's standpoint, just trying to think right now, as we're learning just now about the possibility of going to distance learning and still having activities, which I'm all for, by the way. But definitely getting creative and working with transportation on what that would look like, because that is one of our concerns out of our office, is kids go to school and then they go to their practice. And if we take the school part away, we already ran into parents and families who struggled with transportation, who are in the hybrid model on days that they don't have in-person learning, but we're still expected to come to practice. And so we will continue to work through that. Obviously, it's going to become a, a much bigger issue in, in working to keep those kids connected, but that's definitely something we're gonna have to work through transportation with regarding buses, bus drivers, funding, so, definitely.
Thank you. I just was hoping it was something that we were considering, and I, I imagined it already was, but I just wanted to ask the question.
Yes, yeah, we've been thinking about it, talking about it, yep.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? So where we're at is that we've gotten a recommendation from the superintendent regarding what he is projecting as where the direction that we need to go as a district. Back in August, this board passed a resolution giving the superintendent the ability to move into that pathway, but he also wanted to make sure that if, if this body, if, if the board would like to take action on the recommendation, that we could do so, or we can give him the discretion to move as part of the resolution that was passed in August. So I would be open to hear comments regarding that, or suggestions and thoughts around those pieces. Ms. Beloit?
I think we should take action on it.
Is that a, everybody kind of, Ms. Ellison?
I have a clarification question, then. If we take action tonight, does that, does that set a pattern for us having to take action every time we make a change?
No, we've passed a resolution. In my opinion, I would ask for a clarification from legal counsel is probably what I should do, and not practice law up here when I don't have a law degree. So, Mr. Monz, if you could give us clarification on that, or Ms. Reber, if she's still in the room, we would greatly appreciate that information. So the question is, Mr. Monz, is that there was, not to put you on the spot, and I apologize, but there is a resolution that was passed, giving the superintendent the opportunity to react or to take action to change of the learning system. And if we take action on the, this recommendation tonight, would that, that would not void the resolution that was passed in August, would it?
No, I am not an authority on Robert's rules, however, we're good in this instance.
Yeah, and, and so then we would still operate under the resolution. But given, you know, this is the first time we're making a switch, and a robust conversation, and, hey, we're all here, this is not a Thursday afternoon when a decision has to be made on the spot because of a situation, which I am fully, you know, fully prepared to do if the, if the need arises, but I think as a matter of, I don't know, convenience might be part of it, we're here, we've talked about it. I think taking action would, would certainly not set us up in a bad way moving forward.
Ms. Ellison, did that answer your question?
It, it did. I'm just, I'm looking at the, so the recommendation, just to, so we can clarify, is that students in grades nine through twelve would shift to distance learning effective Tuesday nineteenth. Monday, November sixteenth will be a transition day for high school students, only there'll be no school for students in grades nine, twelve. Students in grade six, eight would remain in hybrid, students in grades five would remain in hybrid, and student activities will continue as before with a continued focus on the implementation of strict safety protocols. So with that... So, with that being the recommendation, we have four separate points here. My, my question is that, for example, in grades six through eight, the, the recommendation from MDH chunks it in elementary and secondary. And so, we are splitting out middle school and high school. And so, as we are saying that students will remain in the hybrid learning model in grades six through eight, is that for the foreseeable future? Is that until Thanksgiving? I mean, what is the parameters on that? I can understand, the rest of it makes sense to me, but that's the one.
Yep, so we would be, again, we'd continue to monitor our county level and local data. We have a consultation scheduled for the week, not this week, but the following week, and if we need to, we could get one scheduled this week as well, and then we revisit that. And so, that's, again, I think as we, as we move through the school year, this may, may become more fluid going, going forward. So, we're not saying that, that resolu, or the, the recommendation isn't saying that grade six through eight is going to stay in hybrid for, you know, for eternity. They're staying there for now, and we would continue to monitor the data. And if that, if the change became necessary, we would, we would move on that, so. And that's a good example of, if it's, if it's evident we need to make a move, I would call Chair Mullen, I would call a view, I would say, we need to make this move. We would likely just go ahead and do it, and there wouldn't necessarily be a board meeting to have that discussion, if it was pretty evident that we needed to do it. But if board members wanted to have a meeting to talk it through, we would do that.
Okay. Yeah, it's just, I'm, I'm asking so we can look at, you know, for the record, if that's, that's the piece that I don't feel comfortable with about this at this time, but if I do feel comfortable with the other three, I'm just trying to think in my mind, with Robert's Rules of Order, on how to vote.
The change is, the change in learning models is at the high school level.
Right. But if, but if, based on the data, and based on parent and student and teacher feedback, and based on the numbers, if, you know, for me, it looks like we should be going six, 12, distance. So, I would say that for that piece of it, I would rather see that to be distance, but I would want to vote in favor of the other three. I'm not, I'm not explaining this very well, I apologize, but, so we're, we're voting on this as a whole, four different recommendations, but there's one that I, I don't feel comfortable with. So, would I vote yes or no? That's what I'm looking for.
Dr. Newmaster? I, I'm sorry, Ms. Ellison?
No, I'm just, yeah, I'm just looking for a clarification, because if we're voting on all four of these, and there's one that I, I don't agree with, then I would vote no on the whole thing.
Well, my rec, my, my, I'm saying that we're going to vote on the whole thing, the recommendation as a whole.
Okay, okay.
Dr. Newmaster?
Helps, thank you.
The only thing that's changing is the high school model. So, is there a reason why we couldn't make a simple motion to be in support of the recommendation to transition high school to this, beginning this date with, and to be determined?
I, I would, I would say, Dr. Newmaster, that I think we need to make a motion on accepting the recommendations from the, regarding the learning model from the superintendent, is I think would be the best way to manage it from this, from, from where we sit currently. Just my opinion. Ms. Thompson?
Dr. Kaszczak, could you just explain why that decision was made to keep the middle school and younger students? I mean, from my perspective, from all of the research and reading that I've done, the younger, the child, the less chance they have of spreading COVID, and one of the reasonings or beliefs behind it, and they're still working on it, is that their lungs are still smaller. So, as the older we get, the more aspirations we have, the more easier we are to spread. If you look at the, the age range of where, where more spread is happening, it is in that high school age range. Is that one of the reasons why you?
And that was part of the conversation with the Department of Health folks the other day. Yep, that, and there's a difference in the amount that high school students versus middle school students are out, out and about in the community, and that was part of the conversation, too. And so, the Department of Health was comfortable with us revisiting it in a couple of weeks to see where we're at, at that point, and then making a decision about middle school students then.
For, thank you for the clarification. I know in, like Forest Lake, and I'm not aware of other districts, but I know Forest Lake still has sixth grade students in their elementary education program there, so, you know, I, I would love all of our students to be in class every day. That's what we all want, more than anything. And hopefully, we're going to get there. I believe we will get there, and I believe it'll, it'll happen sooner than later. So, you know, anything we can do to help the kids at that younger age level who really need that in classroom time, I feel that it's very important to do that. And I think the high school students, you know, we want them in school also. We really do want them in school. I have a senior, I want her in school, I want her to have her senior year and experience all the things, and she's already lost out on some of that. But she is much easier able, or she is much more able to manage her distance learning model than my sixth grader is, for example. So, I think, for me, I, I like the way that it's been broke up, so that it kind of gives, we are keeping as many students as we can in the classroom for as long as we can, and I, I appreciate that.
Other questions, comments? Dr. Newmaster?
I agree with whatever was said, and the only comment I want to put in is just that I think bringing this out, discussing it, making it clear helps, makes it more understandable and transparent, but I would also hope that the classroom teachers are involved by their administrators, or whoever involves them, so they feel like they've got the heads up for whatever transition is coming down the way, or change in distance, or whatever, because people need to be involved. So, that's it. I think everybody does an amazing job in a messed up time, so, huzzah, but it's tough times.
Thank you, Dr. Newmaster. So, with that, I, you've heard the recommendation from the superintendent. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Beloit, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. Is there, I, I'm going to ask for a clarification, I don't know if Judy's in the room, Jody's in the room, is this, so do we need a roll call, or can we just do a, a motion? Thank you. With that, is there any other discussion?
I would just ask if you could read it one more time, so we're very clear on what we're voting on.
Would, I would ask the clerk to please read the recommend, recommendation.
Move to approve the following learning plan. Students in grades nine through 12 shift to distance learning effective Tuesday, November 17th. Monday, November 16th will be a transition day for high school students only. There will be no school for students in grades nine through 12. Students in grades six through eight will remain in the hybrid learning model. Students in grades K through five will remain in the hybrid learning model. Student activities will continue as before, with a continued focus on the implementation of strict safety protocols.
Okay, would ask, is there any other discussion? Hearing or seeing none, would ask the clerk to please read the roll.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman? Ellison? Nay. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
With a five to two vote, the motion passes. The motion passes. With that, I will entertain a, unless there's anything else, Dr. Kaszczak, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn, sir.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.